Six thirty P M. For the Winter City Council. Shelley, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren.
Here.
Councilmember New.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Here.
Mayor Cowan.
Here. Okay, Pierre, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly. On the count of three. I, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, before we move on with the approval of the agenda, I need to make a statement here, since we are no longer conducting these Zoom meetings by executive order of the governor. It is now being conducted by teleconference pursuant to A B three sixty-one, which was passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor. The agenda in the city web website state how the public may address the city council. Members of the public joining the meeting by Zoom who wish to make a comment on any item may press the raise, raise a hand button or just wave your hand for us. Members of the public joining by telephone who wish to make a comment on an item may press star nine at the appropriate time. We ask that you please mute your audio until it is your turn to speak to minimize distracting background noises. I will call each item and we'll ask after the staff presentation if there are any members of the public on Zoom or the telephone who want to make a public comment. I'll also ask for written comment from staff. All oral public comments will be limited to three minutes, comments over Zoom, and the telephone will be taken first, followed by a summary of written public comments received prior to the meeting that will be ready, read by the city clerk. While the chat function has been enabled to assist with procedural questions that may arise, comments in the chat feature will not be considered public comment. Please raise your hand or press star nine to provide public comment. Alternatively, if you do not wish to speak at the city council meeting, but would like your comments read in the future, you can email your comments to the city clerk by five P M. The Monday before the meeting. Thank you. Now that the official stuff is over with for the state, we will move on to approval of the agenda.
I have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Move tonight's agenda for approval.
New seconds. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember New. Shelley, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Okay, before we get started with council and staff comments, I'm going to give our city manager Kathleen Treppa first shot here. I believe she has a couple of new faces to introduce tonight.
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm very pleased to introduce our new senior planner Kirk Skierski. He is online. His video is open. Kirk can wave. And if you don't mind, I'll just give Kirk a moment to introduce himself and tell you a little bit about his background.
Thank you, Kathleen. As mentioned, I'm Kirk Skierski. I've been doing land use planning for the last eight to ten years, coming directly from Siskiyou County where I served as the planning director. So looking forward to this, this experience, coming from a jurisdiction approximately sixty-two hundred square miles to the city of Winters. Just slightly smaller, so looking forward to, looking forward to this. Thank you.
But Kirk's roots are here. He went to U C Davis, and so he's very familiar with Winters. Rumor has it he's spent a lot of time here and his, and his college days and so we're really happy that he's been able to come back to the area and join us. The other person I'd like to introduce is Alena Branson. She also has her video open and Alena can wave. She's coming to us from a temp agency while we sort of reorganize and re-craft our, our central office here. And Alena can just briefly describe her background because you'll see her supporting the city council, the city manager and the H R group.
Hi all, my name is Alena Branson. I do come from a temp agency, but I have a background in recreation with the city of Vacaville. A lot of hands-on experience working with children out in the field, but also back office work, getting those programs up and running. So I'm really excited to be working with the city of Winters in the manager's office.
So thank you very much. That concludes the new staff members or the new people who you'll see at City Hall, and we're grateful that both of them have been able to join us. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathleen, and welcome Kirk and welcome Elena. Happy to have you guys helping us out here in Winters. Okay, we're going to move on with the council comments and we'll start with Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you and good evening and welcome Kirk and Alena. On September twenty-second, I attended the opening session for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, followed by the SAC Valley Division luncheon, and I was recognized as outgoing president. Somewhere around here is an award if you guys want to see it. I attended a Valley Clean Energy Subcommittee meeting while at the conference. That was fun. One of the, and only possible because of Zoom. One of the keynote speakers was this guy named Richard Montañez. He's author and creator of The Flaming Hot Cheetos, and he was an amazing speaker. It was, it was good. On September twenty-third and twenty-fourth, the conference continued. I attended many events, voted and had a closing session. I attended the redistricting event that was at the fire station on September twenty-seventh. I fielded emails from constituents on a number of matters happening in town. Lastly, yesterday I met with city manager Kathleen Treppa to review tonight's agenda, and I attended the Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting. I, I have an announcement. The Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting included information on incentivizing an event that's happening in Winters. Winters is going to have a vaccination clinic for folks twelve and above at Shirley Ramanger on October twelfth from four to seven P M. And I hope that whoever isn't vaccinated can come. And if you want to stop by and cheer on the people that are getting vaccinated, I think that'd be fun, too. You ready? Wait. Ah, doesn't come in. Sorry. Anyway, it's cute.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Congratu- congratulations on the recognition from L C C. It's well deserved. Okay, Councilmember Anderson.
You, Mayor. Monday, October fourth, at a Zoom meeting with city manager Treppa to go over tonight's agenda on Zoom. That's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New.
Thank you. On Wednesday, September twenty-second, I attended the Yolo County Housing Meeting. We discussed mainly the procedure for upgrading some of the housing units that we have now and possibly selling off some, and that's took up most of the meeting. That was at three o'clock and then at five o'clock on the twenty-second, it was the city and the winter school district two by two, and we just checked in. Got an update from the, the school district and they found out what we're doing. On the twenty-third of September, I went to Cecilia Agar Curry's fundraiser, which is maybe not city business, but at that fundraiser, I have to find Mika from Domus and talked to her a little about, about where the plans are for the, the senior center. And so I don't know whether that has made any movement, any movement has come from that or not. I realize she's no longer with Domus, but she said she thought she could help. On the thirtieth, I met with Dave Dowswell, talked about rean and zoning and housing in general in Winters. Friday, the first, I went with the ladies for the F F and E furniture fixtures and the equipment for the senior center. And then this morning I met with our city manager Kathleen Treppa about tonight's agenda. That's it.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Thank you, Mayor. On September twenty-second, I attended the Yellow Fire Safe Council meeting. Also later on the twenty-second, I was participating on the city school two by two, as Councilmember New mentioned. One of the things they did announce to us there was they will be holding a meeting tomorrow night to discuss possible uses of the, what was it? Measure W monies that they're getting to upgrade their school. So you could probably find meeting information on the school district's website for that. On the twenty-third of September and the thirtieth, I sat in on the city management staff meeting. And on October fourth, I had the agenda review with city manager Treppa. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of things, the Fire Safe Council meeting. And also I had a couple of discussions with the city manager over the last couple of weeks. One today regarding tonight's agenda. I also had some calls with Councilmember Lauren regarding some citizen concerns. And then also with the mayor Pro Tim Biase regarding the upcoming city manager's evaluation. Can't believe it's already been nearly a year. But I think that's about it. Thank you all for all your work on your outside assignments. And we'll now move on to public comment. At this time, any member of the public can address the city council on matters which are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to make public comment on non-agendized items, I see Rebecca Friday's hand is up, so maybe we can get her unmuted. There we go. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. It's nice to see everybody. I'm Rebecca Friday. I live at one-one-two Leeway Village Court. I want to call your attention to an issue that has affected many of the nonprofit organizations in our town. Specifically, the recent increase in the cost of renting city-owned spaces and community events, for community events. As president of Friends of the Library, I'm concerned with the high cost we incur when we rent the gazebo, the wooden park, or the community center to put on programs and events that are free to the public and benefit the community of Winters. This past July, the city of Winters charged seventy-five dollars to use the gazebo for each of five Thursdays for our summer concert series. Fortunately, First Northern Bank Waste Management and Oats Country Store stepped in to sponsor us and covered our costs. We do not charge for the concert, but we do collect donations to help pay the musicians and the sound crew. It is difficult to ask businesses to help with costs, especially as they struggle to stay open during the last eighteen months. Our community events, though, do benefit those downtown businesses because they encourage more people to eat out on those nights. Most years, we hold a free holiday festival at the first, on the first Saturday in December, and we had hoped to hold it this year. However, between the rise of COVID nineteen cases and the nine hundred dollar deposit for the community center, we've decided to cancel our deposit and scale back our event, which we will hold somewhere else. And this is my concern. Nonprofits are part of the fabric of our community. They put on events, programs, and educational instruction that benefit everyone. They weave the cloth that makes Winters special. Can you imagine if we stopped having the Festival de la Comunidad or the Salmon Festival or our summer Shakespeare performances? In June, I met with Kathleen Treba and Shelley Gunby to talk about this issue. We had a good discussion with many workable ideas. The most important idea, I think, is that we would put together a committee with other nonprofits and city staff to figure out how to fix this difficulty. I recognize there is a cost to operating these community facilities. However, the fees should not prohibit nonprofits from holding programs and events that benefit our town. It would be much worse to have buildings that no one rents and no cultural events for people to enjoy. Therefore, I'm requesting that a discussion of city fees for nonprofits be placed on the agenda soon and that the council members direct the city manager to convene a committee to discuss options so that all nonprofits may be heard and an equitable solution can be developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there anyone else with their hand up? Shelley?
Yes, Rhonda Pope Flores has her hand up. And then when she's finished, Karen May would like to speak.
Okay, Rhonda, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Um, I am the new owner of Two-O-One Main Street in Winters. Many of you know it as the old church on the corner. And I just wanted to express concern of the process for our conditional use permit and the length of time that it is taking to get through that. And I just wanted to relay that, you know, that we have purchased the building in December. We have been funding ongoing costs. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. We purchased the building back in December. And I had many conversations with Dave Dowswell before purchasing the building. I looked into some of the needs in the community as far as what's in your general plan. There was a need for community space, cultural space. And specifically, I want to point to the, the honoring of Native American tradition and culture. I am a Milwaukee Indian from Amador County. So therefore, this is a native-owned business. We are looking to bring a, a benefit to the community. And I think you can see by our efforts that we've made many great improvements to the building. It is no longer, you know, being occupied by homeless people. We take pride in the building. We want to bring a benefit to the community with cultural, spiritual, and performing arts. And I heard earlier comments about that need. And so we are trying to provide that need. So I just wanted to make you aware that this process for the conditional use permit has become very lengthy and costly. And thank you for that opportunity to express that concern.
Hey, thank you, Rhonda. I believe Karen May is next.
Hi there, everybody. I live at one hundred Casselli Court. I don't know, I, I read where there is a surplus of money at the end of the year here. And I don't know what it can be used for and what it cannot be used for. But I do recall that several years ago, the city staff all had to take pay cuts. And so I would like to see the funds issue bonuses to, to the city staff of equal amounts.
Okay, thank you very much, Karen. All right, is there any other public comment at this time, Shelley, or any written public comment?
I have no written comment and I see no hands or waving hands.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. City manager Treppa.
Yes, thank you. We have four items on the consent calendar. The first is the, are the minutes from the September twenty-first meeting. The second item is resolution number twenty-two-one dash sixty-two, which is accepting grant funding from the state of California in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and amending our fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two general fund operating budget to reflect, reflect both the grant revenue and then the expenditures. The third item is resolution number twenty-two-one dash sixty-three. And this is a recommendation to the Yellow County Board of Supervisors, reappointing Councilmember Pierre New to the Yellow County Housing Authority Commission and Mayor Cowan as the alternate. And then the final item on the consent calendar is resolution number twenty-two-one dash sixty-six, which is approving the purchase of a command vehicle for the fire chief from Folsom Chevrolet in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. This represents not quite, well, a little more than half of the eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollar budget that we have for this command vehicle. The approximately forty thousand will also be incurred to outfit or outfit the command vehicle, and that will come back to council as a separate item because it's done by a separate vendor. And those are the four items on the consent calendar.
Okay, is there any council concerns or comments on a consent calendar? Okay, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
I see no raised hands and I don't see anybody waving at me, so.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll entertain, entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Mayor, I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay. Your second. Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Biase and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Shelley, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on. We don't have any presentations tonight, so we'll move on to discussion items. And the first one's going to relate to A B three sixty-one, which I mentioned at the beginning of the move, the beginning of the meeting, which is a determination of future public meetings and where we're going to hold them and how we're going to do them. So I think city manager is going to take this on.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll do a brief explanation of the two options before the city council. And I'd also like to recognize that our assistant city attorney Joanna Jen was instrumental in preparing this item, and she's available to answer any questions regarding A B three sixty-one. So briefly, the council has two options under A B three sixty-one. One is to decide whether or not the council would like to continue to meet via Zoom. And if so, they would need, you all would need to make certain findings related to the public health emergency and the need for social distancing as a public health mitigation measure. And if the council would like to continue to meet via Zoom, we've prepared a resolution number twenty-two-one dash sixty-five, which makes certain findings and determinations that are required under A B three sixty-one and would allow you all to continue meeting remotely and would also have the other commissions and committees meeting remotely until such time as you decide to meet in person. The council could decide tonight that it wants to meet in person, at which point we would all go back to in-person meetings. And we would follow whatever the health orders are with respect to indoor meetings. So at the time that would require, you know, at this time that requires wearing masks indoors. We are working on finalizing our hybrid platform. We did test that last summer. We need to fix some of the audio components of the setup. The reason people couldn't hear me well while I was in the council chambers is that only the speaker on the wall was picking, picking me up. It wasn't picking up anything coming through the mic. So we need to make some changes to the configuration, which we hope to do in the next couple of weeks. Test it one more time again with only a small group of us in the chamber. And then we will be able to offer a hybrid option where people could participate either remotely if they so choose, or they could come in and meet in person with masks on as long as the health order requires indoor masking. So right now, the two options before the council are continuing to meet remotely via Zoom. And if you would like to do that, you need to make those findings and then adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash sixty-five. Or if you'd like to go back to meeting in person, then you would so determine. And our next, our next meeting would be held in person. And Joanna may have a few other comments that she, she may want to add.
Okay, thank you, Joanna.
I think Kathleen covered it perfectly. Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Joanna. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, first thing I, I want to make sure we're clear on is if we pass the resolution twenty-two-one sixty-five to continue with the remote meetings, what's the timeframe for this? Don't we have to renew this every so often? What's that timeframe?
Yes, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Joanna. I see you starting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you would have to make those findings every thirty days. However, there will be some meetings where it will be longer than thirty days of or monthly meetings. So we would recommend putting this as a recurring consent item if you do decide to approve the resolution tonight.
Okay, and if we want to change it back to in-person, we can do that at any time?
Yes, this is, this resolution only provides guidance on allowing for continued teleconference meetings. You could still have in-person meetings if you choose to do so.
Okay, thank you. Is there any council questions or concerns regarding the future of our meetings?
Make a comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to say, you know, I can't wait to be able to get back and meet in person. But I realize we're not at that point yet. There's a couple of things, I think, holding us back. Number one, the, where we're at with COVID still, the county health orders. And number two, I think we're still trying to get all the bugs worked out, as city manager said, for our audio visual. And I think in the future, I'd like to see us, when, when possible, do more of a hybrid meeting because we do get a lot more of the public participating than when we held just the in-person alone meetings in the council chamber. Sometimes we wouldn't have any public there. So for now, I'm in favor of just moving forward with the Zoom meetings until we can move on to hybrid meetings.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New. You're on mute.
Thank you. I just want to second everything Mayor Pro Tim Biase just said. I definitely think we have to get everything in order for the hybrid meetings. So I think that we should wait a while until we have things in order before we even consider getting back and meeting together. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lauren.
I support the comments by Mayor Pro Tim Biase and Pierre on this. And I, I think it's just not, we're just not ready. It's not, it's not, we have vulnerable populations. We have people with compromised immune systems. There's a lot of reasons to not have in-person meetings at this time.
Thank you. Harold, do you have any thoughts on this issue?
I concur with the thoughts expressed by Jesse and Councilman New in particular. That we work towards getting a hybrid meeting, getting the bugs out of it. See if the, when it might be suitable to hold those.
Okay, and I, I agree with, with all the comments from the rest of the council as well. I'm eager to get back to in-person meetings, as is the mayor Pro Tim. Definitely want to get back to that as soon as we can, but we've got to get the bugs worked out with the system because I definitely want to go with a hybrid when we go back to meeting in person. Primarily because of the extra public, public participation we've started to get since we have been doing these Zoom meetings for a year and a half now. It's a, it's really nice to see over two dozen people on the meeting tonight rather than sitting in a room with nobody but staff in, in the room. So it, it's, you know, that's an important piece here. And if, and if doing a hybrid is what it takes to get the public participation, then that's definitely the road that I'd like to see us take. Before we have a motion or vote on this resolution, I'd like to see if there's any public comment. Shelley?
Uh, yes, Mayor Richard Casavecchia, and then Uh, yes, Mayor Richard Casavecchia, and then once he's completed, uh, Kate Lattish.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Welcome.
Uh, Richard Casavecchia, nine five four Potter Street. Um, I definitely agree that the hybrid. Option is really, that's the way going forward. Um, I think that gives everybody the, the most options, the people that are technically. Less adept allows them to just drive down to City Hall, sit down there and, you know, view everything. Um, it allows people that might not want to be out in public or maybe a little shyer to, to talk. Um, remotely or more convenient if they're not in town. Um, but, uh. I think that direct observation of government is really a fundamental hallmark of democracy and Zoom is just not cutting it. Um, I, I, from what I understand, uh, remote meetings are an option. It's not a requirement. And I think that the longer that we keep doing Zoom, the less of the motivation there is to really get the, the hybrid system worked out. Um, I, I know that there's a lot going on and it's easy to. Not work on the new thing that's not quite, that's kind of giving everything trouble, it sounds like, um, when it's not needed. Um, now I really think that getting back to in-person meetings. You know, as soon as possible, either next meeting or then, or two meetings from now to give a little time to work out some of the bugs in the system is, uh, the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I believe Kate Lattish is next. Welcome, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate Lattish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty one. And, uh, and I appreciate staff and council comments about, uh, about the need for right now to stay online, uh, because of the public health situation. And also, uh, to, uh, because there is so much more engagement since we've, since we've gone online, that it really is an, uh, an opportunity with that. Uh, and the, the city council meetings aren't the only place that having, having this forum, this, this opportunity for people to participate has increased the, the access equity and, and involvement. And so I, I really appreciate it and I'm delighted to hear staff talk about, uh, setting up the hybrid system so that that can be, uh, be in place going forward. Uh, from just a personal point of view, I wouldn't have been able to attend any of the city meetings for the last ten months, uh, because of some non-COVID related situations. And so for, for me, it, uh, it makes a world of difference having it online. And so I, I appreciate the discussion about hybrid. Once it is safe from a public health point of view, uh, to have, have some folks meet in person. So I, I, I request council to, for right now to, uh, to use the option afforded under AB three sixty one to maintain online meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Shelley, do we have anybody else with their hand up or any written comment?
I have no written comment and I see no additional hands up.
Actually, a quick follow-up.
Uh, Richard Casavecchia has requested a follow-up.
Okay, Richard?
Uh, it's, it's kind of, um, a blending of this item and, uh, one of the later items on the agenda. Um, from what I recall, there, I think there might be some hardware. Concerns with, uh, conducting a hybrid meeting with the council chamber as it's currently outfitted with its audio visual. Um, it's just a suggestion that might be something to spend the, uh, American Recovery Act monies on. I know there was a, um. A tech upgrade or an, um, evaluation that was on the, the agenda, but, um, that might be something to look at.
Thank you. All right, um, before we, uh, vote on this resolution or take a motion on it. Um, Kathleen, can, can you speak to what you, you know, let, let everybody know? What you feel might be the, the timeframe to go back to, um, hybrid meetings? Um, and you know, give that another go. I know you talked with me personally about. First, we do like we did the last time. We tried it with just a couple of us in the room, probably possibly myself and yourself and. And, uh, the city clerk, and if all goes well, then, then we could go back to hybrid meetings. But do you have some thoughts you can share on a, on the timeframe?
Sure, so, um, we were able to do what we did last time due to some volunteer, um, effort. Um, somebody who has the technological experience and they volunteered their time to help us. Reconfigure the, um, system in the chamber. Unfortunately, there's no documentation because the system is so old in the chamber. And so it was really trial by error, which is why we ended up with the issue with the audio coming from the speaker on the wall as opposed to the mic. So it's a matter of coordinating, um, the availability of the volunteer to be able to come back into the chamber to help us reconfigure that, test it again. And then as soon as I, as soon as we can align our schedules to make that happen, then what we can do is, um. We can test the hybrid ourselves without changing anything where the mayor and a couple of staff members can be in the council chambers and we can try it all over again. The interface between Granicus, which is, um, our agenda management and streaming services and Zoom. Will require two people to operate the system because of the feedback. What happens is, is that if both are open. The switches are open, there's feedback, and so we have to mute and unmute. The master switch for each system to avoid the feedback problem. So once we figure out the configuration for the speakers and the audio, then we need to document how the system works, train the staff. That will be operating the systems during the in-person meetings so that we make sure we all know what we're doing. Um, before we invite the public back in and then we end up with potential problems. So we need at least one meeting to test it and make sure we're comfortable with it, document it, so the instructions are right there. Um, and then we can, um, come back into the hybrid meeting. I think we're, I think we're close. It's really now just a matter of coordinating schedules with the volunteer. Um, in terms of at least fixing what we have available to us. And yes, um, we do have an item later on in the agenda regarding an IT review, and I can speak a little bit more at that time about that item.
Okay, great. It sounds like we could possibly COVID, you know, cross our fingers. We could possibly get back to some, some regular in-person meetings, maybe sometime in November is what I'm kind of hearing. Yeah, I think so. A couple of.
I think we need a couple of meetings, um, I, because we're trying to schedule that, um. That adjustment now and we won't be able to do it, I don't think, until next week or the following week, and then we'll need to test it. So I think we need a couple, we need a couple of meetings.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, Councilmember Lauren.
Yeah, just, um, wanted to clarify that, that, well, first I wanted to thank staff. Um, I know that staff has worked diligently to get all of the, this new, uh, technology up and running and it's been a lot of work. So I wanted to thank, uh, staff for that, but also, um, my concern is just that we also, um. Either add the language or just hear the concern that once it's safe, um, from a health, uh, point of view, that, that. That's important to me, that that's acknowledged. And I'm ready to make a motion.
You can.
All right, I would, um, move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash sixty five and, um. Add a reoccurring item, item on the agenda, uh, as we proceed. And, um, is there, I'm not sure if there's anything else that needs to be said on the item. Okay, that's the, that's the motion.
I think Joanna's given us a, a proper nod.
Newt was second to motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember Newt. To approve twenty twenty one dash sixty five to continue with the Zoom meetings and until we can do otherwise. All right, um, Shelley, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Newt.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thanks again to staff for, um, all your work on this and, and continuing work to get us, uh. Back to where we can, uh, be in person and also. The hybrid model. I think that's going to be definitely the wave of the future here. So with that, we're going to move on to item B, which is, uh, approve city council priorities. Um, that we established during the goal-setting workshop on July twenty third and twenty fourth. And, um, I think the city manager's gonna start this off, Kathleen.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a, a follow-up to the council goal-setting, um, that took place over a two-day workshop on July twenty third and twenty fourth. And so at that time, the council, um, heard presentations from the senior management team on a, um, a variety of topics related to their sort of functional areas. And we, as staff, suggested some priority projects for council's consideration and then to sort of get the conversation started. And at the time, we were focused on five, um, focus areas that we had discussed, um, the previous winter, and they include fiscal stability. Community development and place-making, community engagement and transparency, economic development and organizational, uh, excellence. And then as part of the second day, uh, we went around the room and we continued to, um, develop project ideas that fit within those five functional areas. And a sixth focus area, um, related to environmental sustainability was, um, suggested and supported by, um, the majority of the council. So we now have six focus areas and ultimately, uh, the council agreed, um, in the majority to five strategic initiatives or priority projects. And so what I've, uh, done here, um, for the staff report is, um, I wanted to bring them back, um, for council consideration and as a report out to the public. But because of staff capacity and resources and we can't work on all fifteen projects at the same time. I took an initial, um, effort at, uh, prioritizing these projects in tiers, so tier one, two, and three. Tier one would be the highest priority projects to be their impact or ongoing importance. Available funding, or they would set the foundation for other projects. Tier two projects would then follow and then finally tier three. And so these all represent priorities for the city council and the staff. Um, but again, it's to try and help us create a roadmap for how we're going to leverage our, our, our resources. I did want to note that we did add one project to this and it's really an expansion of the conversation or a suggestion that was made during goal-setting related to. Um, bike and pedestrian pathways and trails and creating more infill sidewalks. Is that we did add, um, the ADA transition plan, um, to the priority list consistent with their federal requirements. We, um, we had a plan that was created in twenty seventeen, but since we've just triggered the threshold for, um, having a formal ADA transition plan. We've added it to the, uh, added it to the priority list. So this is really a roadmap for us. Um, I'd like to stress that as we scope projects, we would bring them back for council authorization. Um, anything that requires, um, consulting support or contract support of twenty thousand, uh, twenty thousand or more comes back to the city council for authorization. So this is really to sort of frame the conversation, particularly in the future item related to, um, American Rescue Plan dollars and our budget residual. Um, I'd like to, um, just have council consider the, um, final project list and the tiering. And then provide us with any feedback on how you think we should prioritize some of these projects. And then we can create a sort of a recurring report that would come back to the city council periodically, every quarter or every six months. Um, that reports out on progress for some of these priority projects. And then as we complete some projects, we'll have the opportunity next year to, um, through goal-setting to, um, create additional projects. So we'll always have a list of things to work on. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so any questions on the, on the list and the, um, tier numbers and. Everything that's been laid out by city manager, Councilmember Newt.
Um, I've looked over the list and I understand most everything about why we've. What we've selected and where, why it's tiered as it is. I am a little surprised that broadband opportunities came in, uh, on the third level though. And I'm just wondering if there's some special reason for that, because we've been trying to get that done for such a long time. Uh, so I, I'd just like a little, maybe more feedback on that, uh, option.
Sure, so I have reached out to, um, the county, Yolo County, and, um, I think that it's RCRC. It's the Rural California's, um. They were, yeah, rural city, rural, rural county. If they represent rural counties, I don't think it's rural cities per se, but it's rural counties. And the former, um, uh, CAO for Yolo County is now the Executive Director for RCRC. So RCRC is actually doing a broadband project. And Yolo County intends to participate in that broadband project, which then makes the city of Winters eligible. Um, as a jurisdiction within Yolo County eligible to participate in that project. The reason, um, I suggested that it was a tier three project is because it is such a large project and requires the, um, support and assistance of. Um, a consultant who works in the space, given some of the other priorities. Um, I just felt it would be, um, advantageous to work on some of the other ones that were more readily accessible in terms of their, their topic. And the broadband really gets involved in, um, it's a much larger project and is going to require the support and the collaboration with, um, other people and more people. That's the only reason it's tier three. Certainly, the council can move it up as a tier one priority. But again, because we can't work on all of these projects at the same time, um, just based on available resources and based on where we were with certain projects. I place it at, at a tier three, but council can certainly move it if it so desires. And when I have more information about the RCRC project, um, I'm, I'm, um, more than happy that if that's, if that's something that seems like it's more readily available. And doable and imminent, then that would be something that would slide that broadband project forward ahead of some of the other projects. So for example, the city website I put as a tier two when I was working on this. And actually, it's already, um, suggested as a more immediate project, um, in the next, um, in the next staff report. So these things are really going to move and evolve depending on opportunities and resources.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it, it really sounds like, um, with what RCRC's, um, working on. That that could end up being very beneficial for us and actually save us some money towards, towards broadband. With, with the work that they may do ahead of us, so it, um. Not that it has anything to do with the tiering, but it just sure sounds like we need to sit back at least long enough to see what they can. They can do that'll help us, um, before we start spending a, a gob of money on our own is what I, I think I'm hearing. Um, okay, is there any other, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Newt.
I, I'd just like to thank, uh, our city manager for the explanation and I, I understand the situation much better now. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lauren.
I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's a ambitious and, um, strategic list that will carry us into the future. And help our city and our population, um, for years and years to come. Thank you, Kathleen, for your work on this.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Thank you, Air. Yeah, I just have a couple of comments on the tiering system. I do appreciate the work that's gone into this. I, we had these, the goal-setting, uh, workshop and we worked on all these things. And we came back with everything being important to the council to get done and realized that that's not possible. We have a very limited staff, so we have to prioritize things. So I thank the city manager for her time in prioritizing some of these. Some of them, as I look at it, like I'm the community development and place-making where we have the evaluate infill sidewalk and ADA ramps. That really falls into the ADA transition plan. So I don't know that it would really be a three on the tiering since it will be tied in with the other, so.
Um, and you're right, and actually, um, at the time that I did this initial tiering and wrote the report. Um, I hadn't anticipated that we would kick off the ADA transition plan, but that's now moved up. So again, that's an indication of how quickly some things can change based on circumstances or opportunities. So you're right, the ADA transition plan is now a tier one.
Um, when we get to the organizational excellence, I think the technology review, to initiate the technology review, instead of being a two. Based on our discussion or on the earlier agenda item, our hybrid meeting, that needs to move up to a, a tier one. I think it needs to be done sooner rather than later. Um, the council norms is important as well, but I would say the technology review. Should be done right away so that we can have that option and going back to hybrid when it's safe to do so. On the community engagement, I would make the updating the website also. A tier one that ties in with the ADA transition plan with the hybrid meetings. There's a lot of links there, so I would raise that to a one. And on economic development, I would say the economic strategy report to the council. Could be a one rather than a two, and that's on the agenda.
That's the next item. You can see how day.
That's the next item. You can see how dated this work is, it's already changed.
But otherwise, and I would say they evaluate the cannabis opportunities. I would probably make that a three in my book rather than a two. I know there may be other opinions otherwise. But in my opinion, I would make that a three on tier system. And that's the only comments I have, but thank you for your work putting this together.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Anderson, do you have any thoughts on the the tiering and the and the list, is it?
The one one thought is. We have. We have, pardon me, I'm on. We have. A transition plan for. American Recovery Act. And I wonder how reliable that will be as a source of funding. Given the. Given the status of COVID and extending the debt ceiling that's going on at the federal level.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
So the American Rescue Plan dollars are committed and confirmed. We've received eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in August and expect to receive the second tranche of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Next August, so that is confirmed and reliable money, revenue or funding for us. And so Shelley Gunby will provide a little bit more information when we get to the budget item about some proposed projects. So I think that's a reliable source of funding. The ADA transition plan, we do not believe that A R P money can be used to fund the ADA transition plan. So right now, we're receiving some quotes on how much a plan for the size of winters might cost. And when we come back to the city council with a with a proposed project and consulting contract. We will likely, well, the finance director and I will need to talk about potential funding sources. And so we'll have a conversation about how we might fund that project. And we'll have that for you when we come back after we have firm numbers in terms of how much that will cost us. So you're right, we'll need to identify a funding source for that project.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council comments or concerns? Okay, we'll open it up for any public comment. Shelley, do we have any public comment on this item?
Um, I am not seeing. Any hands.
Was there any written?
I have no written comment.
Okay, all right, council member Lauren.
I I'm ready to make a motion if there isn't further discussion.
Okay, you can do so.
I move that we accept the item and also as is without any changes. But understand that as as money and items present themselves, there it might be fluid. And and that's okay.
Okay. We have a second.
New a second.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I I I do want to make one more comment before we vote on this. And and that is, I I agree with the comments from others on the council. And and I think, you know, I I know the mayor pro Tim mentioned a couple of things getting moved from two to one. But based on the comments from city manager, I think that's happening. It's it's already happened with a couple of these and we'll we'll see that play out. In some of the other items that we're going to be discussing tonight. So so I think I'd be good with the list as as motioned by council member Lauren. And just knowing that it's a fluid document that will change as opportunities surface. So with that said, Shelley, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
All right, okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're going to move on to item C, which is to consider the twenty nineteen Economic Development Advisory Committee report. And I think city manager is gonna run this by us.
Yes, thank you very much. And so as was noted previously, this was. This was discussed during council goal setting and was mentioned as a priority project. It was initially, I think, set up as a two and appropriately, it's now a one. Because this is an easy report to bring back to the city council. And this is the final report of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. It was drafted in twenty nineteen and was presented to a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission on June fourth of twenty nineteen. There was some conversation that took place about the the recommendations. And it's really related to developing an overall strategy to help grow the economic basis for for winners. And so for a variety of reasons, it didn't go back to the city council for final approval or consideration. And so what I've done here for this report is to bring the original report. And I've included the staff report in the minutes from that June twenty nineteen meeting. And I've also provided a brief overview of some of the recommendations that were included in the in the EDEC report. To let you to sort of update everybody on where we are with some of these recommendations. Because some of these recommendations staff and has been working on. There are others that are in the report that we haven't really worked on. And there's some that at this time I wouldn't recommend that we pursue just because of constrained resources. So when you review the report, things like the downtown plan implementation and infill development. That can really be tied to downtown visioning project, and that's a project that we'll describe a little bit more in the next. In the next staff report, but that is certainly something that can be picked up as part of the downtown visioning project. Diversifying the zoning on road eighty-nine and expanding light industrial zoning along five oh five. That obviously will require cooperation and collaboration with those property owners. That is not anything that we've initiated at this point, although opportunities may present themselves to. To focus on on that in the future. And certainly now that we have a new senior planner on staff, Kirk, because he is here overseeing planning. And housing and economic development, we now for the first time in a number of years have full-time professional planning expertise on staff. And that will allow us to do a little bit more than what we've been able to do at least in this last year. So I think there are a number of these strategies that are already being worked on and some that, you know, I think are, I would recommend remain on hold for a little bit. But I wanted to bring this report forward consistently with council direction at council goal setting to see if it still resonates with people. If there's any additional feedback that the council would like to provide and then at least bring it forward and we can say it's been reviewed. And if council would like to approve it, provide some additional direction, we can use this as a roadmap. As we continue to work on the city's economic development. And that's a very brief overview for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We have any council comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Sure, Mayor Pro Tim.
So thank you, thank you, city manager, there. Yeah, I would like to see us as having been part of this committee that worked on this report along with Mayor Cowan. And quite a few business owners, people from town that got together and put this these ideas together. I would like to see us formally adopt this. I know there are some pieces in it that need to be updated, the flood study as mentioned in there. And that has been done, so let's incorporate that into the plan. The recommendation for creating an economic development coordinator position. While I know we don't have the funding to do that at this point, I'd like to see it remain in there. As something that just to keep in the report and maybe put it on the back burner. That one of these days where we do have the resources to to move in that direction that 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 happened. There are whatever, you know, I would definitely like to like us to adopt this. And if we need to bring it back for further discussion on, you know, how we want to prioritize these things. I think as the city manager mentioned, some of these things are going to require us to work with the property owners on some of the rezoning. One of the big recommendations also was to increase our light industrial zoning out along five oh five. So that we have more room for economic development. So I would like to see us move forward with adopting this report formally with some updating to be done by staff as possible.
Thank you. Any other council comment on this item? Council member New.
I don't want the mayor pro Tim to think that I'm agreeing with him all the time. But in this case, I think he's correct. And I think that we should go ahead and and approve this. It this has been a long time coming. I mean, it it was done a long time ago. Well, over a year ago, and it's time to get take action on it. So I I am in favor of going forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Council member Lauren.
Let me get my mic on. I I I'm very happy to talk about this item. On the list of the the recommendations, the the first item is the economic. Development coordinator. And I I mean, I I will support, you know, what my colleagues want on this. But it seems to me that maybe that shouldn't be item one A, because there are so many other things that we can do. And if there's an item one A, what one B is establish a local economic development advisory board. Item one C is economic development partnerships and and so on. There are other things that rise to the top. So I'm, to me, one A needs to move and be, you know, one D. But. To support my council members and all the work that they've done putting in, you know, put that they've put into this. I would support it as is. It just makes sense to me to move that particular part around.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Chris, to clarify, I think when the report was written, I don't think those number, the numbering system was actually a ranking. It was my understanding, it was just the way that we kind of organized the report, but it wasn't actual ranking.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that's true. Councilman Anderson, any talks on this item?
Not really.
Okay. Shelley, do we have any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised and I have no written comments. I'm looking to see if anybody's waving in their screen and I see nothing.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I hate to do it again, but I'll agree with the mayor pro Tim too. We we were both on this committee a couple of years ago and 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 also on the previous EDEC committee. And I think we did a lot of good work and we had a lot of participation, as the mayor pro Tim mentioned. From a lot of local business owners and property owners. And I think it's way past time we should have adopted this. And to be quite honest, I thought we had. I didn't realize it wasn't formally adopted. But there's definitely items in there that kind of rose to the top of what people felt was important. And the rezoning on eighty-nine was pretty much right at the top of the list. And and the possible rezoning and addition of the light industrial zone out by the highway. Because both of those things are directly related to more local jobs. So I think, you know, those those things need to to move forward as as rapidly as we can. And I'm glad to see that we are making this formal. So with that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, mayor.
Okay.
I move that we formally adopt the twenty nineteen Economic Development Committee report. And that we direct staff to update it as needed to incorporate things that have already been done.
Okay, thank you.
New seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Biase and a second by council member New. Shelley, roll call vote, please.
Council member Anderson.
Hi.
Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move on to item D. We're going to review the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget closeout. And we have a resolution attached to this twenty twenty-one dash sixty-four. Amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. Are we starting off with Shelley or the city manager?
No, this is Shelley for the first part of this for this presentation. Thank you.
Okay, finance director Shelley Gunby.
Good evening, city county mayor and city council. Before you tonight is the topic of how we ended up our fiscal twenty twenty-one year. For the first time in several years, we actually have revenues in excess of budget of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. This is the first time in about six years that we've actually had revenues higher than our expenditures in the general fund. The the revenues, increased revenues are mostly due to the building activity that we've been seeing in the community in the last couple of years. And part of it is from building permits that we actually issued in twenty twenty-one. We had anticipated in the budget as we prepared it a year and a half ago. That we thought building activity would go down during COVID. It didn't go down. Actually, it it remained very, very, very robust. And so we had more buildings and more building permits pulled in twenty twenty-one than anticipated. And that's about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of our excess revenues. We also saw increased revenues in our property tax, property tax in lieu of V L F. And our some of our other ancillary taxes, the municipal services tax. And the U U T tax in the general fund, and that generated about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars more than we had budgeted in the fiscal year. And so that accounts for ninety, those two places, those two things alone account for about ninety percent of the four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And so staff is going to come forward with some recommendations on how to spend some of this. And and what to do with some of this, so I'm going to kind of jump around in the staff report a little bit. Because Kathleen's going to deal more, talk with you more about the A R P projects. So what we're proposing to do with the four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars is. If you remember in July of twenty twenty, staff was originally scheduled to take a two and a half. To receive a two and a half percent COLA. And when COVID hit, there was such a high level of uncertainty with what was going to happen to our budget and how things were going to. Transpire that we asked the employees and they agreed to defer that COLA from July first twenty twenty to July first twenty twenty-one. And we did implement that COLA. COLA is a cost of living adjustment. So we did implement the cost of living adjustment in July of twenty twenty-one. But once we closed the books for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and we saw what was what had transpired. We thought maybe we could. Give a one-time payment equal to that two point five percent that the employees gave up in twenty twenty to help the city balance our books. And so we've done all the calculations for that. We've done it citywide for every employee who's still employed with the city as of tonight. And so funding for that is about eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. The general fund is responsible for about seventy-three thousand and fifty-eight dollars of that. The general fund is responsible for about seventy-three thousand and fifty-eight dollars of that. About sixty-four hundred dollars would come from the water fund and a little over fifty-four hundred dollars would come from the sewer fund. And then we're asking to spend about five thousand and twenty-eight dollars from the ARPA funding. And that is strictly for our after-school program folks. Because they continued that program while everybody was out of school. Everybody was doing distance learning. They continued the program. They helped the kids stay on task. They were definitely essential workers. So that qualifies for ARP money. And we wanted to treat everybody, um, equally as we were coming forward with this one-time payment. The cost of this payment includes paying the employee, paying the cost of the city's, um. Social security taxes and paying the contribution to cut the city's share of the contribution to CalPERS. So this is. An almost ninety thousand dollar cost that we would recommend using prior fund or accumulated fund balance, part of that four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. To fund, um, to, um. Thank our employees for sticking with us and being willing to, to make that sacrifice of giving up that, that wage reduction a year ago. In addition to that, one of the things that we did not include in last year's budget was our, um, policy mandated. Contributions to CalPERS and OPEB. If you remember in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we put together a policy on paying unfunded liabilities to CalPERS. And to, um, our OPEB other post-employment, um, benefits. For the city of Winters, other post-employment benefits is just a small portion of the year of the monthly. Uh, health insurance premium that we pay for retired employees. Um, for each employee, it's a hundred and forty dollars a month of the, um. Seven or eight hundred dollar premium that the employee has to pay. And so, um, we have in place what we said we should have included in the budget last year. So what city. Staff is recommending is that we put a hundred thousand. To CalPERS unfunded liability and sixty-six thousands to our OPEB liability. That's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Of the hundred and, uh, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Then there's a separate policy that determines how the water and sewer makes, uh, operating funds make contributions to. The unfunded liability. So all told, um, the water would split seventy-seven thousand, nine sixty-eight equally between CalPERS and OPEB. And sewer would, um, split a hundred and twenty-eight to ninety-six equally between, um. CalPERS and OPEB. So we would be paying an additional discretionary contribution to CalPERS of two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars this year. And we would make an additional contribution to OPEB of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And I did, uh, some quick math this evening and it's not in the staff report. That two hundred and three thousand dollars that were contributing to CalPERS is about four percent of the total unfunded liability. So it's not a huge impact. But as we continue to make these additional discretionary contributions each year. It will start having a big impact on our unfunded liabilities with CalPERS. And that was an important thing for the city council back when we adopted this, this resolution. So then the next thing that we're recommending that we use some of this, um, excess revenues for is a. Uh, initial, additional kind of, um, classification and compensation survey. Survey. We've had a lot of change in staff in the last, excuse me. We've had a lot of change in staffing in the last few years and we've had a lot of, um, moving parts in our staffing. We've moved people around. We reclassified people to different positions. So what we would like to do is, um, engage a consultant to help us do a review of our. Classifications that we have people slotted into and the pay. We would benchmark cities within our community distance and additional small communities. Um, to help us come up with salary reference points. We'd make sure that we have people. Doing the work that their classification says that they're doing and make sure that we've kind of, um, cleared that up and made that really clear for everybody. Um, and that's about forty thousand dollars, which leaves us about a hundred and ninety thousand, almost a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that we're. Um, recommending that we leave in our operating reserve fund. And so, um. It sounds like that we're splitting the money up and we are. We're trying to reward some employees for sticking with us and being willing to do the, the hard. Choice of, of giving up a raise a year and a half ago. Where we want to position ourselves to make those contributions to our unfunded liability so that we start bringing those items down on our balance sheets. Um, it shows good fiscal policy to start getting those things paid off earlier. We want to make sure that everybody's being, um, classified and compensated correctly. And then we want to put that other hundred and ninety-one thousand. We want to leave it in our reserve funds. Um, there's a table included in the staff report that shows that our reserve funds have been dropping precipitously. Um, since twenty fourteen, we've gone from a two point four million dollar fund balance. To, um, our, our fund balance would be nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, uh, and. Nine hundred and sixty-seven, five sixty at, with the adjustments that we've recommended. Um, so we want to, we're trying to reverse that, but, um, also take care of some items that we need to take care of at the same time. So, um, that's my portion. I don't know if we want to talk about ARP and then ask for questions or if we want to. Take questions based on the general fund and the recommendations from the general fund first and then move on to ARPA money. Um, whatever the council recommends.
Um, I think I, I would prefer if we finish the discussion on, on the, um. The fund balance here and then do the, um, ARP as a, um, its own item. If that's okay with everybody else. Um. Yeah. That's, that's what I, I would prefer is to keep the two, the two separated.
Works for me.
I agree.
Okay. Um, because is the, um, so amending the resolution. Twenty twenty-one sixty-four, that's only about the extra money, correct Shelley?
Correct. Um, yes. I will double check very quickly because it's, you know, it's been two weeks since I did it.
It also includes, it includes Shelley, if I might add, it includes an amendment to recognize the ARP money because that came in after the budget was adopted. And only to recognize the proposed expenditure of about five thousand dollars for the instructional aid. So it's really amending the budget for recognizing the ARP revenue. But it doesn't include any of the ARP projects that we've, um, suggested and I can speak to that separately. Yeah.
Okay, I think that would be good. Um, does council have any? Questions, concerns or comments regarding, um, the budget surplus item?
I have, would make a comment. I would see if other council members would like to speak first, but it doesn't look like they do. I would just say, um, my thanks to Shelley and to Kathleen for putting this together. I agree with all these recommendations in here. I think it's very important that. We do give the staff that, that deferred COLA that they willingly gave up during COVID when we didn't know what our revenues were going to be. Um. I, you know, I know they're not considered essential workers to, through the ARP funding, but to me. Our city staff are essential workers. They've worked through the whole pandemic. They didn't shut down. I mean, even though we had to shut some, the city hall down at sometimes, but, um, our city staff worked through the whole thing. So I think. It's great that we're able to have this surplus, if we call it that, and are able to. Give back to our employees who deserve it. I like the idea of paying down our unfunded liabilities. I mean, especially like the idea of putting some money into, back into our reserves instead of. Taking it out like we have been doing that table where you show the, the fund balance history since twenty fourteen and just watching it go down and down and down. And seeing where we're at now compared to where we should be. I know our fiscal policy says that we should have. Fifty percent balance of our annual operating expenses and we're nowhere near that. I. Think Shelley, you could clarify. I think we're only going to be somewhere around seventeen or nineteen percent.
Yeah, so, um, yes, after we make the adjustments, um. If, if you are, if you were to approve the resolutions, let me rephrase that. If you were to approve the resolution, then our, um. Our fund balance would be about seventeen percent of our budgeted expenditures. Um. So it's, uh, but it's better than it was last year.
It's a small step, but at least it's a step forward.
And it is a step in the right direction. We're asking you to make responsible decisions. We, I think we've made responsible recommendations. Um. So yeah, you know. I, I think it's good. The one of the things that we can talk about is a little bit of what has affected the fund balance. Is, um, we did use some fund balance to do things like the parking lot across the street, right? So we used some of our fund balance to do that. And that was a, um. A conscious decision that the prior city manager brought forward to the city council and we received. Authority to do that because having that parking lot completed really finished off that block over there and worked well with the hotel. So we have, we have used it for some of those other items as well.
Yep. I also completely agree with, um, how staff is, um, divided these funds up. Um, definitely with repaying the COLA. We made it clear when we, um, accepted the staff's, um. You know. Putting that raise off that if the funds ever became available that, you know, we wanted to. Um, repay that. So I'm really glad we're able to do that. And, um, I'm, I also agree with, you know, a little bit more money for the after-school program, which, um, went through this whole. Timeframe as was mentioned, um, and putting some towards the unfunded and, uh, and, uh. And the CalPERS. I, I think this is a, a good division of these funds and, um, I support it. Is, um, if there's no other council comments, um, Shelley, do we have any public comments regarding? Um, the funds or.
Uh, Kate Ladish has her hand up.
Okay. Um, Kate, welcome back.
Mayor Kate Ladish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty-one. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank staff for everything that they've done and that it's, uh, I still find it extraordinary that. Our, our mighty city of winters staff voted to forego COLA last year and I think it would be highly appropriate. Uh, to, to use some of the money, uh, to, uh, to repay, uh, repay what they forego, what they. What, what they went without last year. Sorry, I can't, can't even complete that, that word. But I, I, I just, I wanted to take a moment to voice enthusiasm for being able to do that. Uh, I think it shows good faith. Uh, with our city staff who work so hard and, uh, and would be a very good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Shelley, do we have any other hands raised or?
No written comment was received.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I think council member Anderson would like to say something.
Okay. I don't have him on my screen, but council member Anderson, go ahead.
And he'll need to unmute himself.
Hit that mute button.
You still muted?
Yeah, he's looking. There he is.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah. Time discussions about. The parking lot and. I bring up some of the comments. Rebecca Friday about. Solving the problem with our, uh. Nonprofits. And what about, I'm wondering what. Is happening to the, uh. Downtown Paseo, I guess it's called. Mid-block. Crossing. Is, is that going to happen anytime soon or?
Yeah, the, the heart part is, uh, next up on our discussion. That's the next item.
So I'm too, too far ahead of you.
Yeah, there you go. You, you jumped ahead. It's part of the, um, ARP discussion. So, yep.
All right.
Okay, council member Lauren.
I wanted to express my support for all the comments that my colleagues have made on this item. But I also wanted to add that looking at, um, the great step of rewarding the employees that have been faithful to the city of winters and adding the. Initial classification and compensation windshield survey. I think it says, uh, to our future, um, employees. And the ones that are here that we are open for business. We appreciate you and we want you to stay and we will reward you. And I think that's, this is the right time for that message. And, um, I think it demonstrates, uh, really steady, uh, leadership from our city manager. And, uh, really putting the right foot forward after the pandemic. So I just wanted to. To reflect gratitude and also that this is, uh, also strategically a great move for the city of winners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, uh, with that said, if there's no further comment, I think what we can do here is we can adopt this resolution. That pertains to the, um, budget surplus and then we'll move on to the discussion of the, um, ARP funds. So.
You want to motion?
Entertain the motion. Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm, okay, I move that we, uh. Uh, approve, um, the adoption of city council resolution twenty twenty-one sixty-four.
Hey, we have a motion by council member new and a second by council member Lauren. Um, Shelley, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, council member Anderson.
Saying in favor and. Do support the cost of living.
Okay. Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member new.
Hi.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thank you staff for, um, your work on this item and, um, I'm glad to see we were able to, uh. Repay the COLA. That's a, uh, a very important thing for everybody on the council. I know that. All right, um, we're going to move on to a little bit of discussion on the ARP funds. And I think this is going to get us back to the city manager.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to, um, say thank you very much to you and all of the council members for your comments, um, regarding the employees. Um, they work very, very hard. Um, we are leanly staffed and, um, everybody does, um, try to do their best and we are juggling a number of priorities. And so I think it's really critically important to be able to, um, recognize the sacrifice that the employees made almost a year and a half ago. Um, and, um, I'm thrilled to be able to communicate with them that you all approved that recommendation this evening. So thank you very much for that. Um, so as I say, the Marine Corps, I will bring up the rear with regard to the American Rescue Plan dollars. And so. Um, as we have shared previously, the city of winters, based on population, um, will be allocated. Approximately one point seven five million dollars in American Rescue Plan dollars. Um, the money is allocated, um, in two tranches. We received the first tranche in August. That's eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Will receive the second half next August. We're required to encumber all of those funds, um, all one point eight, one point seven five million dollars by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And then expend all of that money, um, for eligible projects by the end of twenty twenty-six. And so what we've, um, put before you this evening are several projects that are the initial project list for this ARP funding. Again, recognizing that we can't work on everything, um, at the same time and remembering the council priorities that, um, council, um, established during goal set and, and adopted earlier this evening. We'd like to make some recommendations for several projects. So the first one, um, well, and let me back up a minute, ARP dollars. So the first one, um well, let me back up a minute. ARP dollars have to be spent or can only be spent on some very specific activities. So capital improvement projects related to water, sewer, and broadband are specifically um eligible. Direct aid to industries that were negatively impacted by the pandemic, such as hospitality, tourism, restaurants, hotels, um direct aid to families that have been negatively impacted. Um so things that are directly related to the economic recovery for um industries and individuals that have been damaged um or harmed financially. One of the things we are not eligible for applying for, which many cities are, is rev um revenue recovery or reimbursement for lost revenue. Because of our building activity and the way they calculate lost revenue, we actually technically, under um the US Treasury guidelines, do not qualify for um replacement revenue um because our base year did not include T O T, and we didn't have as much building activity. And this last year, we had so much building activity, we really filled um the void associated with lost um sales tax, gas tax, and um some other things. So um the projects that we would like to recommend this evening relate to digital governance, which is also specifically uh eligible under ARP guidelines. And in the category of digital governance, we'd like to start with an initial IT assessment. These can be costly, but I think we'd like to focus on a real um basic uh sort of tier-one review um at this point to take a look at our hardware and our software, our operating systems, specifically the AV um technology that's in the chamber, um the potential of upgrading the technology that's in our large conference room. So that would make it um available for two-way Zoom, hybrid meetings, and even potentially taking a look at the um AV technology that is in our EOC training room. Um this is just a general estimate, twenty-five fifty thousand dollars, um but our hope is to be able to identify um either weaknesses in our systems or opportunities for improvements, and then we would come back to the city council with more specific information as we identify potential projects. So this is a general estimate. And again, um anything in excess of twenty thousand dollars would need to come back before the city council, so there's no appropriation tonight. It's just um identifying some projects that we'd like to move forward on, and we'd like council's feedback. Once we do um the IT assessment, um one of the other related projects to digital governance is an online business um license platform, and Shelley can speak a little bit more to this if she'd like, or if you have questions. We do have a system, but it's really a manual process. And so there are a number of um online portals now for various government services, and to be able to use a platform for business license applications and renewals will facilitate the process, will make it much um more efficient, will allow for online payment, will allow for um bulk letters to go out when it's time for renewal. It will allow for staff transfer of applications electronically rather than by paper, so that planning can check um zoning when a new license comes in or for as part of the renewal process. It will allow us to run reports. We do have a quote for a system from one vendor, and we'd like to get some other quotes. The quote is for thirty-five thousand dollars um to implement the system, and then there would be an annual subscription cost that would be built into next year's budget. Because these are all cloud-based systems, and there's an online, I mean, there's an annual subscription fee. Uh finally, related to digital governance, and again, this was mentioned earlier as a tier-two, and it's now moved up to be a tier-one priority, and that is um the new website. And I'd like to point out that this is a general estimate, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars. And that's not just for the new system. So there are there are a variety of um modern platforms that are out there that have built-in functionality and integration points with other with other business platforms. Um so we would need to um decide which platform we would want to select, um have vendor support in terms of configuring the platform, but also built into this estimate is our hope to be able to retain some outside support to actually create the content for the new platform. Our current website is very dated. It's very old. We have a lot of content that we need to prepare um for all of the various departments and services that we offer. And in order to expedite the development of the um new website and launch it, we could really use some additional help um with preparing the content for the new website. Again, um once we have a firm quote from the final um the final vendor, and once we're able to identify some assistance on what it might cost to prepare the content, we would come back to the city council with an actual um with an actual budget um for council approval. So those are the three projects related to digital governance. The last two projects relate to the downtown area. So the first is a um a council priority, and it's been a priority um really since my arrival here. And it's um I've dubbed it the Downtown Visioning Project, related to outdoor dining, um parking, and um the trash dumpsters. And this would really bring forward a lot of the previous planning work that has been done through the years. Um we would um engage a consultant who could create, um who could help us project manage this. It would be um updating, um identifying all the policies and plans that have been done in the past, engaging the business community and the residents to talk about um the vision for the downtown area, what we would like to see, um and then identify some opportunities for planning commission and council consideration, and then the follow-up would be the actual um draft um amendments to all of our policy documents, the municipal code, and then and then update those to come back before planning commission and ultimately council. So it's really a multi-pronged um tiered approach to um identifying opportunities for updating our plans and our policies and um helping to decide, especially in this pandemic environment, um how we want to create a new environment in the downtown area, factoring in outdoor dining, and then what that means potentially for parking impacts, and again, what to do with um with the dumpsters as part of the alley activation plan and some of the other things that have been um envisioned for downtown. So the seventy-five thousand dollars is to retain a consultant. Um this again is an estimate. We started the work to try and scope the project. Um this is a critical project, so we would bring um the request for proposal, once the project is scoped back for council consideration, to make sure we're all on the same page, and then we would issue the RFP and go through a selection process for council approval. Then the final project for ARP funding at this point, um and we're looking at it potentially um a total of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is a twenty percent match for a competitive grant that Valerie Whitworth has agreed to or offered to write for the city. And she has identified a rural recreation grant and has been working very hard over a number of months to um pull together community resources to design and develop um the Paseo Park, or what she has dubbed Hart Park um that would connect Newt's Expressway with Manch uh Main Street at the mid-block crossing. And this project was envisioned about twelve years ago, I believe, when the city purchased the property from Valerie Whitworth and her uh in her late husband. And so what I've done is I've update, I've attached the updated concept rendering that has been developed over the course of a number of months for council consideration and public input. And should council uh support the concept and be supported of the grant application, what we would do then is bring um the grant, the a resolution back at the next council meeting, actually earmarking the seventy-five thousand dollars and supporting the grant application. The the resolution is um a requirement of the state grant. And so um this is really the first step to make sure that council and the public have had an opportunity to take a look at this, um provide some input, and then we can finalize whatever um the designs might be for the grant application. So attached is the concept, um and it includes um a a path that crosses through that would be ADA accessible through the Paseo from one side to the other. It has planner beds that are surrounded by seat walls that will allow people to sit down. Um and um there's some tables in there, so it's a community gathering place. One of the important features of the park is a small stage with an ADA ramp that would accommodate classes, um small performances, presentations. Um it would be covered. Um and so that's a key element of the park. Uh there are some trellises that have been imagined that would be installed against the brick walls, but not attached to the brick walls, that would serve as um a place for rotating art that the Winters Participation Gallery could incorporate or manage in terms of rotating art. Hold on a second. And then um there would be electrical and lighting upgrades um as well as a water fountain. There is a s- a new transformer that is located in the corner, um that would be dependent upon the undergrounding of the um poles and Newt's Expressway. And there's a platform for a small shed for to store supplies that would assist with programming on Main Street. It may be that we can't accommodate both of those things on that on the two platforms that are there, so we would defer to whatever the needs are for the transformer. So should the kids, so the total cost that Valerie has estimated for the development of this park is about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um and then the grant requires that the city match um twenty percent of that, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars. So if council concurs with earmarking about seventy-five thousand dollars to support the grant application, it would be a match for the grant application. Then we'll bring this back um at the next meeting on the consent calendar, the resolutions um for uh for the grant. And that is it for the ARP projects, but and I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of these that um we've suggested uh this evening.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. All right, um council comments, questions, concerns? Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
If no one else wants to speak first, I will go ahead. Um again, I think staff, I I think this is a a good starting point. We're talking about two hundred and eighty thousand out of the hundred and seventy-five or so thousand dollars from this first tranche, so I think the IT assessment, as we discussed earlier, counts the priorities. You know, getting that the uh assessment of what do we need to be able to do our hybrid meetings? The council chambers, the large conference room, the EOC conference room. I think that's a a great use of this money. It falls under the guidelines, the online business licenses. We talked about that. I remember discussing it with the former city manager, and it was coming soon. I think we never could really fit it into our our budget at the time, but um I like the idea of going to the online for that. The new website, something I've been fighting for for several years is to get a a new website um in place. I know ours was updated quite a while back. Wasn't huge changes, but it was better, but it still lacks so much compared to what we can be doing with our website, and it will make it a lot easier for the citizens and the public to be able to interface with the the city hall. And the downtown visioning, again, goes back to the the EDAC report, and it falls in line with all the other things we've been talking about earlier. So I think that's a great a great start with seventy-five thousand to use some of the ARP funds to to kind of get get a a look at where where we're at on all the plans down there. We have to figure out something soon with what we're gonna do with our outdoor dining and use of all that space and the parking that we're potentially losing if we do stick with it. So that's important. And the Hart Park, I thanks to Valerie for all the work that she's done getting the plans together. I really like the plans. I met with her once, and we sat down there and went over the plans in the park, and I can see that space coming, becoming very vibrant if we can get the grant for this park. I highly support that as well, so those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Lauren.
Yeah, just have a brief question about the grant. If the grant isn't successful, is there any commitment from the city on that money?
So staff is suggesting that the money be used for the match for the grant. If the grant is not successful, the money wouldn't be appropriated because we don't have the grant funds, and so it would remain with the the balance of the ARP funding that we've already received.
Okay, and then just a follow-up question, and I thank you for answering that. I I I love the idea of park there, and I always have, and you know, that it's part of Winters history. I just, I I always thought of it and read of it as Paseo Park, so I was just wondering if we're adopt adopting a name change um without any kind of community input, and if if there's a process for that, I just wondered.
Yeah, thank you for raising that. And so it's been referred to as Paseo Park. Um there is no, we we don't have a formal n- naming policy, so um it's Valerie herself has dubbed it Hart Park, um given her efforts for the park, and because art was always intended to be part of the part of the development of that park, but certainly the naming of the park um is up to the city council, and the city council would like a process or like some additional input, we can certainly um we can certainly make arrangements for that. Part of bringing it forward tonight is to allow the community to provide some input regarding the designs, and certainly they can provide some input regarding the naming as well.
I I realize it's a sensitive topic to raise the question, and I was just I'm interested because it hadn't I I don't think that anything's come before us with just a name change, except some street names on um on the infield development over by the um the Church of Latter Day Saints, and um council raised questions about the naming at that time.
And that's correct. We don't have a naming policy, and it council may want to consider a naming policy, and we could bring that back if there were if the majority of the council felt that that was important. And it also um to some degree will relate to the fundraising for the senior center, or if we do any major fundraising for the community center. Um naming um uh naming rights or or naming um naming a room or a facility after a significant donation is a common fundraising tool. So it it may be that council is interested in pursuing um a policy related to um how to name parks and facilities and major um major rooms um as part of this process.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember New or Councilmember Anderson, any thoughts? No?
Yeah, the uh I think the naming of the this particular park, as it would could be is uh I think Valerie has worked extremely diligent diligently with the downtown side of things. And I I don't know that it's necessary to go beyond that with the pursuing this grant. If we want to keep going on how to name everything, I don't know that this would have to be a part of that.
Right, I I I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I don't think uh the name of the park is is really part of what we're deciding tonight. We're just deciding on the use of some of these funds. I I I do think there should be some consideration given at some point down the road about, you know, how we do name these places. The city manager pointed out, you know, some some good ideas about how that can help us with funding on projects and such. So I think that's um definitely a separate discussion but one that we should have. My comments on these items, I completely agree with all the IT-type items. They're all much needed. And it's nice that we have these funds available to to move those things along. Um we've we've been needing to do it for a long time. The last two items, the downtown visioning, um that was one of our our top priorities that are goal-setting, so here we go with our you know, where we are at with those lists and in in um priority numbers and stuff, but that was right up there at the top, I think, for everybody. And we need to get some of these things resolved and and some of these things rehashed with the outdoor dining, the parking, um the dumpsters, and um whatever we can do to get that kickstarted and moving along uh sooner rather than later, I think is in everybody's best interest. The Paseo Park, as most know it, or or Hart Park, or whatever we choose to name this park, has definitely been something everybody's wanted to see happen since the thought of putting the alley activation plan together, um Newt's Expressway and the new hotel. Part of that from day one has always been making this little lot that used to be a building before the earthquake a hundred or so years ago into a park. And it and it was always just this little pass-through park from from the alley and the hotel. And it it was always talked about it being something for art and And it it was always talked about it being something for art and entertainment and. And um, I don't think there's anybody that um on the council that would um. Not want to support this grant. And I would like to see staff do whatever we can to help. Um Valerie with um writing this grant and getting, you know, going after this grant and. We'll all cross our fingers that she's successful and. Um, because this is definitely one of those ones that's been on the to do list for a long, long time, ever since I've been involved. Um, with the council, this has been on the list, so. Um, it's been quite some time, so. Um, I'm I'm in favor of all of these uses that we have at this point. And um, do we need to um give a vote of approval on this, Joanna?
Public comment, yes.
Yes, and I'll do that as well. Um, Councilmember New.
Um, it it sounds like. Um, at least four of the members are in in favor of the park and I'll go on as the fifth. But I want to point out. That this is something that we've talked about doing for years and years. And. Valerie has worked very hard on this to write a grant. And we're we're considering matching, not mashing, but putting up a twenty percent match. But this is. We're we're looking at this as a vision. And we're hoping to get a grant. I don't want us to forget about this if we don't get the grant and then we just let the park go for another ten years. So I I want to make sure that that while we're thinking about this. That. That we realize that if this grant doesn't go through. That we need to do something to get this part finished. And so I thank Valerie for all her hard work. And I am in agreement that we need it. I'm in agreement about the other funding that we've talked about just before this. Um, but I did want to say that because I think it's something. That needs to be out in front of the public. We need to have that done.
Yep, agree. All right, um, let's, yeah, go ahead.
Just a question. Thank, thank you, Councilmember New for bringing that up. I was just curious what the um. When will the grant awards be made public too, so we'll know if we got the grants or not? For the partner.
So the great deadline is November fifth and um Valerie, I see her, she's um on the call tonight and she may have more information about when we will be notified if we are successful. Um, and so at at some point, I suspect she may want to offer some public comment and can share that information when she does.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be great. And with that, we'll move on to public comment and Valerie. Would you like to? Speak to these items and your part?
Well, I hope it's the city's park and the citizens of the city's park. It's not my park. I'm perfectly okay with a discussion of names. That isn't a problem for me. I dubbed it what I dubbed it, so I could talk about it because talking about the the vacant lot on Main Street, you know, just it got too wordy. And I I used Hart Park because it's the heart of the city and it was an art park at that vision, so. Um, but that is something that I'm perfectly happy with the council discussing if they need to. Um, the the grant will go in the fifth of November, I hope, actually a couple of days before, because doing it right at the end is always a nail biter. Um, other other jurisdictions have had ten months to work on this grant. We've had. Three or four. I've gathered everything I could before we get the resolution. It looks as if we're heading for the resolution, so we can start hitting the road running. I've hired an assistant who's going to be helping me and Kathleen's been marvelous about working with us and getting the things. That we need and and putting the avenues out so that we can get to the information. There's a lot of information that needs to be gathered. And we have it probably about fifty percent gathered right now, so we have to do the other fifty percent before the the beginning of November. Um, the awards come in the spring. I'm anticipating somewhere around April. And so we will know then whether we get it or not. Um, one of the stumbling blocks, and it's the reason for the twenty percent. Is that our median income, household median income in this town is eighty seven thousand. It shocked me. I've talked to Chris Kelch about it because he works with the same statistics for his grants for the health, winter's healthcare. And I think that um, and I don't, I don't have proof of this, but I think it's because we have multiple generations in a household because the per capita. Is thirty one thousand. But then we have this eighty seven thousand for a household. And I think it's because we have so many people living together. If you move the indicator to Yolo Housing, it goes down to fifty two thousand per household. But we're handicapped and we have to make the twenty percent match because we're not. And we're not fifty six thousand or under. Here for the city area that we're serving with this park, even though the yellow housing people come into the center of town and will use it. So that's, that's the reason for the twenty percent match. I would like to see some permanent um. Kind of funding. Starting to build for the park, just in case we don't get the grant. I'm certainly going to put my all into getting it. And but grants are uncertain. However, this one has a lot of support. I can call and talk to people. It's very transparent. And I'm really hoping I can pull it together in a rapid fashion. I I. I tremble a little at it because I've done grants and I know, you know, I know what it's going to take between now and the first of November to just. Put the thing together, so. Um. If you see me, give me a pat on the back, please, because I'll need it at that point. But I'm I'm really pleased and and delighted with the kind of support that the council's showing for this project because. I think it will enhance the town in a way that we haven't seen yet, and I think with Rhonda's efforts and this park. We will have the most vibrant downtown in the area. And I really am looking forward, Rhonda, to working with you on your project. Because I think that they're compatible. So thank you so much. Um, if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. Um, Shelley, do we have anybody else that wants to comment on this item for the public? Um, I see a hand with.
Yes.
Gar, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, and uh I I guess there's not a whole lot more to add, except I agree with pretty much everything that's been said tonight regarding especially the last two uh. Points. On the downtown visioning and the Hart Park or Paseo Park, whatever we're gonna call it. And uh, I just, I, what I want to add is something that I want to, first of all, I want to congratulate. All the people who have been working on this. The downtown vibrancy and visioning in the Hart Park for so many years. Because it really downtown really has become a uh. An enjoyable place to congregate and I I I'm speaking from. Personal experience. And my own observations with friends and Rotary and 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 other. Uh, winter's citizens. It's a great place now. Winters has become. A a really fine destination. It's safe, it's enjoyable. There are people from the, you know, the hotel walk by who are from out of town. And they just think it's wonderful. So there's, it's a created, what would I guess, when we call a positive feedback loop where things just get better and better as you do it. And so. Two things, I guess, uh definitely. The Hart Park will absolutely do nothing but en- enhance downtown. I mean, it's just gonna make it a wonderful place. Can you imagine instead of a. Open area there, you're gonna have a place to go through to where it's. Music can be done, theater, art, what a wonderful thing, so. Uh, it will enhance downtown just as you've done. And then the second piece is, please, I urge you to uh make. The downtown outside eating areas permanent. At least on the weekends as it is now. It's a wonderful thing. It allows so many uh families to come and enjoy themselves. People, uh, they, it it allows the open mic uh night to occur. It it winners has things. Right, right now, that are now going on, that are way above and beyond anything else, any other cities in the area. Uh, uh, they just don't have it. We do. So let's not lose that. Let's keep that vision and persistence. And so thank you to the city staff, the chamber. All the business people and the citizens of winners for continuing this and especially Valerie for her vision and persistence in this project. My God, twenty years. That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Car. Shelley, do we have anybody else?
Yes, Kate Lattish.
Okay, welcome back, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Kate Lattish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty one. And I'll uh start by saying, given my my earlier and the uh earlier enthusiasm I voiced about had the ability to do hybrid meetings. It seems entirely appropriate to say that I would be excited about the city using some of its A R P money. Uh, to install the technology to allow hybrid meetings and it sounds like that would also work for commissions. That meet in the uh in the conference room. Uh, great, and I and I also want to thank Valerie for her ongoing efforts with this park, really appreciate it and. I and I have a question in terms of process. I just want to make sure I understand if the uh. The design that is included in this evening's packet, if that's the the final design or if this is, if if. Fingers crossed, if it's if it's funded, if it's something that'll go through the regular process of going to to planning commission before the design is finalized, before it is built, and I certainly hope. That uh that there is a way to move forward with the park there. It really would be an asset.
Hey, thank you. Um. Kathleen, can we answer the question about the the process for the part?
Sure, so I believe the original concept actually went to commission a number of years ago, so we can't.
So.
Yeah, so I think it's already been reviewed from a land use perspective in terms of developing that area for a park. Um, uh, but we council can certainly direct if they'd like an additional public input process. A more formal input process than what we're doing this evening. Um, but this was the, and it's been before uh the Senior Commission on Aging as well, um in terms of a public, um a public meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Shelley, do we have any other commenters?
I see no other raised hands. Um, and I don't. See anybody waving at me on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Lauren.
Yeah, before we make a motion or further discuss the project, I'd just like to offer or ask Valerie to um. Please include counsel and um ask us for help as needed if there's anything that you need. Um. Moving forward with your app, your ask and and your work. All right.
Thank you.
Hey, um, I want to ask a question. Um, probably Kathleen, you can help us out again. Um, in regards to the the whole process, because I. I believe you're absolutely correct that we we approved plans for this park a long time ago. Um, how how similar they are to this plan, I I don't recall. It's been too long. Um, but uh I and and I don't want to. Create any issue that would in any way. Um, harm our ability to move forward with applying for the grant or anything like that, but. Um. Do we have to follow this plan? You know, exactly with this grant, or is there still ability to massage this if we felt we wanted to run it back through the planning commission? Um, where where do we stand with that? What's what's that look like with the? Not that I'm finding fault with the plan. I mean, what I've seen of it. Um, the 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 paperwork I've looked at, I think it's a pretty solid plan, but. I'm just curious for the public's information where we stand with it.
So we definitely need to get the grant application in by November fifth, which means that at the next meeting we'll have on the consent calendar. Um, a resolution in support of the grant application. So the grant application includes uh the concept. Um, which is in essence the Paseo Park going through from one side to the other. Um, should um, we could um have over the course of the intervening six months before we're informed if we have. Um, been successful with that grant application, we could create. A public input process where we put it out, uh, we invite public input. The caveat will be is that if there are any substantial changes to the design, we'd have to make sure that that's not inconsistent with the grant application, and if there are any substantial changes that change the budget. Um, we would need to make up the difference in terms of the grant, the match, and whatever the budget is. I will say is is that this park, um, the development of it is um um is eligible um for A R P funding, so since we haven't fully programmed all of our A R P money. And we likely won't by next April, there's obviously capacity. Should we need to. Make up the difference somehow, or if there are changes um associated with council priorities, A R P funding is available to cover any of that shortfall.
Okay, thank you. That helps us out. All right, is there any other? Comment on the A R P. Funding at this point? And if there isn't, we could entertain a motion for. Um, approval of what we have before us. Councilmember Lauren, you had your hand up, but you're muted.
I believe um Valerie Whitworth has her hand up still or has a new comment.
Okay. You're muted now. There you go. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to say that um, in fact, there are some informal input meetings scheduled. And um, there have already been some where Rotary has been informed of it and they they're aware of the planning and. Um, Fort Knightly has has had a presentation and and Sir Optimist, they both have put money toward the park at this point. For a Sir Optimist and um Fort Knightly area. And so um. You know, I think I think that. With the help of the city and moving it into a public review, I think that would be an excellent thing. Um, there are a lot of reasons for the design the way it is and that can be explained. So I just wanted to clarify on that.
Okay, and that's and that's really good to know that you're you're kind of. Per se, making the rounds with all the groups and the organizations and. And to to drum up the support and and I think that might be a a really good approach going forward is to just put you on the planning commission agenda. Put your group on the planning commission agenda. To say, you know, this is where we're at. This is, this is our updated version. Um, of the park and we'd we'd love to get your your thoughts and, you know. Um. You know, your graces on 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 what we want to do. And I I I think that would be a a great idea and a and a great way to approach it. And it would just help, you know, with with getting as much support behind this as we possibly can, so. Um, thank you. Thank you for all you've been doing on this. I um. I I just don't know anybody that hasn't wanted to see this thing done, so.
Well, and I just really want to thank Kathleen again. Kathleen's been incredibly supportive and. And giving me ideas and directions so that I don't stumble in some way and. Not not create the process that's needed, so.
Right.
Thank you, all of you.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right. Uh, I think we're down to, we can uh have a motion on the. On the A R P funds.
I'll make a motion there.
Okay.
I move that we direct staff to move forward with the proposed projects we've discussed tonight for use of the A R P funds. We need more than that, Kathleen. Is that enough?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Biazzi and a second by Councilmember New. And if there's no further comment, Shelley, we will take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Lauren.
Aye.
Councilmember New.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Biazzi.
Aye.
Mayor Cowan.
Aye, motion encouraged unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, staff, for the report and thank you, everybody, for all your input on this. Um, we look forward to spending the Fed's money. Um. It's the least they could do for what they. Cost us. Um, all right, uh, we're gonna move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Uh, very, very briefly in response to some uh some comments earlier in the evening. I hope to be able to provide an update in the next couple of weeks about obtaining the plans for the senior center. As many people know, the plans are actually owned by uh Domas who um designed the facility in conjunction with Blue Mountain Terrace. Um, and it's my hope that we're able to obtain those plans so that we can move forward directly. Um, to finish them, work with the architect directly and then um take the building out to bits, so I hope to have an update on that um soon. And then also um in response to um a public comment earlier this evening. Uh, staff has already planned to put on the council agenda for the next meeting, um several items related to special. uh, staff has already planned to put on the council agenda for the next meeting, um, several items related to special events. Some specific events would be the tractor parade, potentially a holiday bizarre if the paperwork is turned in in a timely fashion. And then also touch upon some of the issues related to whether or not to charge, um, nonprofits, the, um, council approved fees for, um, city facilities. And so there are a number of community projects, um, that have taken place through the years in town. And so I think it would be helpful if we had some policy direction related to some of those activities. And so, um, it's a way to begin the conversation, um, associated with special events. So that will all be on the agenda for, uh, the nineteenth. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Could we also with, um, the meeting on the nineteenth, um, get some kind of, uh, quick little update on the C U P process for, um, the old church?
Sure, we can add that. Um.
Just so we all know how the process is going and.
Sure. We can, we can put that on. We can put it on the consent calendar or discussion, whichever your preferences.
Okay. We'll probably put it on for discussion.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, and you already mentioned the fees for nonprofits. I'm glad you've already got that coming, coming forward. So we can have a little bit of a discussion about that as well. Um, so, yeah, thank you very much. Anybody else with any final thoughts? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the meeting at eight forty-one P M. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.